Good evening. On our call, the city of Cannon Falls, city council meeting for Tuesday, November the 5th, to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Holst.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Here.
Schoblum.
Here.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting. Fortunately, we've got that winter weather coming, so it looks like spring and/or summer and fall are gone, so doggone it. Anyway, at this time, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I will second.
I have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, we'll move on to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. There's anyone that wishes to speak on the items not on the agenda? Seeing as there are none, we will move on to item six, public hearings. The first one will be a public hearing to consider certification of delinquent water and sewer bills. Quarterly, the city notifies property owners whose water and sewer bills are past due. In the account, if the account remains delinquent, a notice is mailed out informing the consumer and/or property owner that they're favored to pay by a date certain will result in the city assessing that amount against their respective property. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the consumer and/or property owner to discuss this item with the city council before that assessment is made. So at this time, we will open up the public hearing for the certification of delinquent water and sewer bills. Is anyone wishing to address the council for the public hearing for the water and sewer Seeing as there is no one approaching the chair, at this time, we will close the meeting and we will take a recommendation to adopt Resolution 2042, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Merle, a second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Or is that a roll call? All those opposed? Moves us on to the second public hearing tonight is item B, Resolution 2043, adopting assessments for property cleanup.
Yep, this is one we do also every year. We had five properties this year. We had to do some property cleanup that ranged from some lawn mowing to actually some dealing with the pool, you know, things like that. So it kind of varies, but we just generally, we contract that out with the local service to do the work, and then we take that bill and then we pay it, and then we assess it back to the property owners at the end of the year. So notices were sent out to all the owners, and they have a chance to come and discuss tonight if they wish.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the meeting. Are there any of those property owners here willing to speak to us? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and this time, the chair will take a motion to approve...
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moves us on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. The folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending November 1st, 2013. Item B are the meeting minutes for the October 15th, 2013 city council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2044, providing notice of intent for annexation of land. Item D, part-time police officer hire. Item E, fire department use of intoxicants policy. Item F, peace pole placement. Item G, budget work session. And item H, Resolution 2045, authorizing 2014 city license renewals. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
H.
Hey, item H will become item 8B. Any other items? If not, with the exception of item H, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That moves us on to council business. First item on council business this evening is the 2014 farmer's market location.
Yep, as we talked about earlier in the year when we moved the market to the parking ride overflow lot, that we give it a year, or give it a season, I guess, and then talk about it at the end of the season and decide what to do. As you remember, we did move it back downtown for a short period of time during construction. You know, we did get input from some of the vendors about the desire to relocate back downtown. I'm sure you've been contacted by some of the vendors with opinions on it as well. So we want to discuss tonight what we want to do next year. Just, you know, we want to do it early just so we can give us a chance to, everybody can plan for what's going to happen, where it's going to be, those sort of things. You know, we can discuss signage, that sort of stuff. But regardless of the location next year, I think what we've learned is that it would make sense for us to kind of have a registration process in place, where that way, we have contact information for all the vendors. So if we do have to move or relocate for construction or for whatever other reason, we have a way of getting a hold of everyone instead of the current processes where we try to contact a few people and then they go out and try to contact the actual vendors and things. So I think that over the winter, I'll work with representatives from the farmer's market, the vendors, and just try to work out some sort of process. But basically, what I'm thinking is, well, a very simple registration form, they'll give us the contact information for the vendor. Well, we would like to ask, I think, that one or two of the vendors kind of serve as managers of the site. So on the weekend, they're in charge of getting the barricades set up to block off traffic so it doesn't drive through the market, and then also would be in charge of, if there's new vendors that show up the day of the market, that they have them register on site so we have their information for the future. If there's any problems, the other vendors know who to go to to talk to about things, you know, that sort of stuff. But those are just kind of my general ideas. I think we want to work it out by discussing it with the vendors first over the winter before we have next season in place. But at this time, I would think that we probably don't need to charge a fee. I would like to give it a season to see if, basically, if all we're doing is collecting registration and kind of coordinating, hopefully, they kind of handle it themselves the way they have been onsite, and there's not really much we're going to have to do with it. Now, if it turns out that staff has a lot more time involved next year than we thought, then we can talk about for 2015 if there's some sort of fee involved. But I think for the first year, it would make more sense to actually see if there's a cost before we start charging. So with that, I guess, really, the main question is, where do we want to have them next year?
You know, over the last, over the summer, I've heard a lot on both sides, but for the most part, most of the people that have come to me, the letters I've received have been that they like it in the city lot, and that's what I'm hearing from everyone, no matter where I go. When you really stop and look at it, you look at the bikers that come to town, they're more likely to buy something from the folks at the farmer's market than they are going to buy a hamburger or someplace in a restaurant because they're more health-conscious in a lot of different ways. So, you know, having it right there for them, too, would probably be a good idea. But I'll let the rest of the council speak, and then we'll take a vote and see which way we want to go, and then we'll talk to the folks out here also.
Well, I would say that I don't have a problem with moving it back to the city lot with, as we had a chance during the few weeks when we barricaded off so we didn't have traffic driving through the actual farmer's market. That was a big thing for me for safety reasons. I do like the idea of all our vendors registering for the reasons that Aaron gave, and I also would like to see someone in charge, if that's on a rotating basis, for those of you that are vendors, so that we have someone who will, you know, be in charge and organize things each year. And if we can meet those conditions, I have no problem with moving it back to the city lot.
I agree.
I agree also.
So do I.
Me, too.
Is there any one of the vendors that wants to speak on behalf of everybody, or all of you can speak, it doesn't matter? I knew Merle couldn't pass it up.
I'll keep it short. My name's Merle Johnson. Live on 220 North Street West, Cannon Falls. You were just waiting for me, weren't you?
I knew you were coming. Surprised we didn't have a placard for you.
First of all, I want to say good evening to all you people. Anyhow, I've heard a lot of good comments right here tonight. I can see this right now from the vendors are very happy. You have a lot of senior citizens out there very happy, and you have a lot of other merchants, too, are very happy about it. I walked the street this week, put up sign, and got a good response from all the merchants, and I guess that, especially Bill, when you came up about two months ago about leaving vehicles parked overnight, my suggestion on that is, that's a great idea, but like in the middle of the week, they should go down at least halfway in the parking lot so you don't have that congested intersection. And everything else, I'm okay with it. Thanks a lot. You're going to make a lot of happy people in Cannon Falls. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Haugen. I live at 12 Riverside Terrace in Cannon Falls. And I was a vendor only for one week. And I love the atmosphere, the way that people in the community really communicate to one another, really talk to one another, get to know one another. I originally grew up in a town about this size, and I wish we would have had something like this when I was younger. I think this is just a huge asset for the community, and I'm very glad that it will be back downtown in the lot. Because I am not a vendor every week, I can see how busy the vendors are when they come. I mean, with their unpacking their stuff, getting it set up. Personally, I would volunteer to be on the committee and, you know, help with that. Thank you so much for the service that you provide for our community.
Thanks, Mary.
I will. I will do that.
Yes, sir.
Steve Josephson, rural Cannon Falls, six miles, that's pretty rural. I spoke to a vast number of customers this summer, and almost all of them wanted us to remain in the city parking lot. And to me, there's a central issue, and that's safety. People can park in the parking lot and walk to the farmer's market without crossing a street, and that's significant. I think I'll just leave it there. There's other reasons, too, but that would be number one. And I think keeping it in the city parking lot and closing off from traffic from driving through, I noticed, and I think others noticed, too, that it's a more congenial atmosphere. People can walk, they don't have to watch their kids as well, nobody's driving through, and it's a festive atmosphere where you can visit, you can shop, and I think it contributes to safety in and of itself. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, I think, based on what I've seen from council's reaction, I guess we should formalize this, and I would, I'll make a motion that we approve moving the farmer's market back to the city lot with a couple of the issues that Aaron will work on with the folks over the winter.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bill, a second by Merle, to move the farmer's market back to the city lot with the stipulations that the folks meet with Aaron, put together a committee and contacts, and also requiring registration for vendors. Any further discussion?
Just a quick thing, Robbie. I think the magic word here tonight is safety. I kind of almost glad we did move it for a while because it put it out in front, and a lot of things got discussed that were just going along and not being dealt with. And I met with Jeff today about some things with our crossing down there and our overflow parking and other things. And everything we talked about with the farmer's market in that process was always about safety and what's the best. The one thing that I would like, since we've got some vendors here tonight, is that Jeff and I talked that the most safest part is the middle part of the lot down there. We'd like people to stay away from, especially where the stop sign is right alongside the highway. We would like them to, for the police not have to enforce it or not have to put it in rules or something like that, and then we get enforcement problems. But for all vendors to get together and realize that we prefer them in the middle of the lot, where that they can go around the far side, come all the way down to the bottom, and come back out the front of the lot towards the highway. We felt that was a real safety issue. We felt that'd make it a lot safer, where if you do have people that drive through and actually want to just holler out the window and pick up their bag of corn and leave, they could do that down by the bike trail down there or the bike station and actually do that, drive through and go back out. But the main thing is, is we do not want that traffic out by that highway. If we get any stoppies there right by that stop sign, then it creates a problem at that intersection. So the biggest thing was, I think, everybody is all fine with moving it back downtown, but everybody wants safety involved. All the council people would like people to be registered so we know who to contact or who to get a hold of. And it isn't just necessarily for problems. It can be that MNDOT calls up and says, next week, we're closing down the highway for one afternoon or something. We also want to use this lot for other things. We can have some big gathering, some big veterans' affair that happens to have a bike ride or something. There might be a Saturday where we will have to move you down the other lot if it's some big event. But overall, through this whole thing, it was always about safety. So that's the biggest thing I want to emphasize. Thank you.
Hey, I have a question. You know, if you do go in the middle like that and they can still drive through, they can be driving right past the vendors at the same rate.
No, the middle part we talked about should completely be blocked off.
Oh, so it'd be blocked by...
Yep. The only way you could go through there is if you went to the far end of the lot, went all the way down the side, and you'd actually be on the back side down below by the...
Pavilion. By the pavilion, right?
Right. You'd be down by the pavilion and then come back out the front trail by the highway again.
Mr. Ray, can you put my name down for...
I had to. I... They got my number, too.
Okay. If there's not any further discussion, all those in favor. Wait a minute.
I just thought it should be noted before any vote takes place that they do about twice the business in the city lot that they did in the other lot. Reason being, people had a couple getting, turning left off of the highway, and the city lot supplies an area where people can go in the back door of the pharmacy and take care of business, go across the street to the food store and take care of business, post office is right across the street, so it really is convenient.
The other thing that you brought that up is, we are, because of all this, coming together with our crossing down there, too, by the Ball Diamonds, and we're getting into issues now with that crossing where what we thought was a good thing there is not necessarily a good thing, because if we put the crossing in a certain location, now we can't park buses there because we have to be so many feet back from signage and all this. So the good thing about this is, is that a lot of the whole picture got addressed, and I'm sure that it does double in the local lot down there.
All right. There's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. All right. That moves us on to item 8B, which is Resolution 2045, authorizing the 2014 city license renewals.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to bring up with that to the council is, is that because of the license thing with the liquor license and all this stuff, I made a call to Aaron because a couple of weeks ago, I was at the Quick Stop over there, and the taxi was sitting there. I don't know what's wrong with me, but I guess I didn't realize we had a taxi in town. And I talked to the gal that was running the taxi. She explained to me how many hours they're on call, and that's a business form, and I thought it was a wonderful situation for Cannon. The one thing that I did tell Aaron that I would like the police commission or for the council to think about is that in the future, I would like to see it discussed, possibly with some of our liquor license, that all taxicab numbers have to be posted at every bar. I would also like to get to thinking about, too, that rather than somebody can't make it home at night and the police being called in, I would like the city to think about handing out a coupon to the bar, and they get hauled home and everybody's safe. So I would like that issue to be thought about and brought up at the police commission about possibly doing a support thing with the taxi service we got here and stuff, about people getting home safely if things get too carried away. And didn't have any issues with the license, just wanted to bring that up to get that added on to it someday. Thank you.
And that's already going to be addressed. We've got a police commission meeting coming up, I think, the 4th of December after that meeting, and 3rd? Okay. Good thing you reminded me. Make sure I'm here. But we'll discuss it then and see what we can come up with. I do agree that the taxi number should at least be posted in all the establishments around because it's an option instead of paying the big price.
The other thing I would like, too, is I brought up to Jeff, is that don't forget to involve Mothers Against Drunk Drivers in this. They collect a lot of money, and that's their job to promote and make things more safer. And if we can get them involved in something like this, too, I think would be a good thing.
Okay. And with that, the chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2045, authorizing the 2014 city license renewals.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that brings us to item nine this evening, reports. Brenda?
Chief?
Got over to this side pretty fast.
You've got to put your games up now.
Just want to thank everybody for such a safe Halloween. The Ridgecrest area was incredibly busy. The motorists up there did a great job of being patient and letting the kids cross. I know from taking my kids around, they were running out of candy at some of the places. So I know there's other sections of town that don't get quite so busy. We were getting handfuls at those areas.
See, Jeff, speaking of Halloween, I had a suggestion from a citizen that, you know, you had law enforcement at the stoplights and then down on Mill Street.
Yep.
They request maybe one up on the next street.
Park?
Yeah.
Yep, we've been making adjustments every year as we start seeing the patterns. We actually had put somebody up at 19 and 3rd this year because we saw the pattern of them going up past the bank and across and down. And I noticed this year, a lot of people going all the way down to Park, so we're going to make the adjustment for next year.
Right.
It's becoming very popular.
Pass it on.
Yep, I appreciate that.
There were a lot of kids out this year because I had a lot more than I've had in the past also.
Yep. And so, you know, Halloween went very well for us. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, the police department has been asked to be one of the pilot locations for the conversion of the DVS system from an internet base to a secure criminal justice information network system-based. So we'll be a test pilot location. There's going to be a total of seven test agencies, and we were selected to participate and try to help them figure this system out. So I just wanted to make the council aware that, you know, we are, you know, taking the forefront, so to speak, in getting ahead on some of these issues and being selected and asked to participate. I think that's quite noteworthy for, you know, our agency to be selected and constantly get these requests because we've got great staff and excellent officers and staff that are willing to give the feedback back to the BCA or any other group that we've worked with. So I would just want to make the council aware of that. Other than that, police commission will be December 3rd.
Got it.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nope. I have nothing tonight.
Leroy?
I just, I wanted to welcome the two new officers, Shane and Josh. Welcome aboard. Be safe out there. The other thing, Aaron, is, are we going to do the work on that budget thing the first week of December? Is that when that's coming, or...
After the next council meeting. So we'll have a work session on the 19th after the meeting.
Okay.
So after our regular meeting, we'll just stick around and we'll do the budget work session then.
So on the 19th one, are we, is that kind of, you kind of got everything drafted?
Yep. By then, I'll have the big stuff in, which mostly at this time, what we're waiting for is the health insurance renewal. So we'll have that in, we'll kind of take the preliminary budget, we'll, you know, we'll have a close to a year's worth of numbers on things like utilities and stuff. So we'll kind of refine it a little bit, and then we'll have what we hope is pretty much the final budget ready for you guys to look at, and then we'll take any input on any changes you want to see. And then at that first meeting in December, then we can hopefully adopt it then.
Okay. And then the East Side project with Henshaw's, is that pretty well buttoned up?
Pretty much.
Even the overflow project, too?
Yep. The only thing left with the overflow project is I think they got to do one test on it, and people will be able to start hooking up. We've already got a lot of them in, getting their permits, so they can get hooked up still this year. So that actually should be able to happen this week, where they can actually start digging in the service lines and stuff like that. So for the most part, that's all wrapped up now, yeah.
Cool. Thank you. That's it.
Jay?
Just one thing up on the east side, up there on 71st and 72nd, it looked like somebody might have dug up some of the new sod that was put down, so maybe we get that reposition back into place. That's it. Just a minor deal.
I'd like to congratulate Emily Trost of Cannon Falls, who won the Class D-A cross-country meet in Norfield this past weekend. She's been a runner-up quite a few years and been trying really hard, and she finally did it this year. So congratulations, Emily, and a good job of keeping Cannon Falls a positive way on the map. And I got a nice...
Emily, and a good job of keeping Cannon Falls a positive way on the map. And I got a nice thank you card from Ms. Kodrilik and Ms. Hoffman's third grade class. I went and spoke to them about being mayor last month and what it means to be a good citizen and stuff. And got a nice thank you card from them. So thanks, guys. And if you want us to come back up, we'll be glad to do it. So other than that, that's all I have. Just remember, if it snows tonight, snow ordinance is in effect, so you may have to move your cars off the streets if we do get that much. But with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.